Hey guys. Let's see, who do we have on Cortland?
Yeah, I'm here.
There you go. Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Hey Rick, how are you doing?
Good, how are you Chair?
Not bad.
Good. Well, I mentioned to you in a text, but just so everyone else knows, on August moon, we sent out notices for the reception center, but we should probably just announce at the beginning of the meeting that that won't be on the agenda, it's been postponed till the 23rd.
Okay.
I was reviewing through the proposal and that I had some questions and I didn't feel like it was ready to be on your agenda yet.
Okay. Do you want to try to do the Liberty Broadband earlier or do that at the very end still?
We could do that earlier so they don't have to wait. After that. Or, you know, move them up. After item three.
Okay.
Three point one.
Okay.
What's your guys' thoughts? Are you okay with that?
You think they'd love to sit through the open and public meetings training?
Through that. I mean, that's a given, but.
Maybe.
It'll be gripping. Sure you have some food and some caffeine close by. Sorry Cortland.
There it is. All right.
Let's see, we've got three commissioners.
Yeah, I see Ron and Jeff. Hey guys.
Oh, there's Hannah.
So that's four, is that a quorum?
We're good. We're golden.
All right, let's start the welcome everybody. Shanna also. Ogden Valley Planning Commission pre-meeting. For what, January 26, 2021? Holy cow. Okay, so Rick. Should we, you want to give us any kind of preliminary information on what we're doing tonight?
No. Just one item of information, just when you get to the election of the chair and the vice chair. I believe John's been on there for one term as chair. Just for your information, the chair can only be appointed for two terms and then after two terms, we would need to have someone else. So I just, I'm throwing that out there. So, but other than that. Yeah. I don't think Steve's on there yet, so maybe we may jump to Tammy's item and hit on that first, if that's all right.
Yeah, I think Steve's gonna be at the Capitol a little later, he said. So. You know. Can we do like a CUP or consent items before five o'clock? Or do we have to wait for five o'clock for that?
Well, this is just the pre-meeting. So we can, we can jump around on the agenda however we want, but when we get to the actual meeting, we do need to wait till five o'clock to start it because that's, I noticed.
Were you, were you referring to me Steve or Commissioner Waldrop?
I was referring to you, but I was just going along with Chair Lewis.
Oh.
I am here.
That Steve's not at the Capitol, okay.
I was, I was going to be, but now I've got to be here, so. Yeah, this, this consent item is a pretty, pretty basic one. It's a, a public utility substation. So condition ease permit for a wellhouse and a tank for the new Crimson Ridge subdivision that's under review right now.
Okay.
It's your typical wellhouse, it's, it's, it's got, I think it actually has wood on the outside of it. I think a lot of times you'll see these have like CMU, split face CMU, that's kind of a tan color, but they're actually doing wood in this case. And then they have a, just a tank that they're gonna put next to their other existing tanks. And we don't, there aren't any concerns with setbacks or anything like that in this case, so I'll, I'll answer any questions if you guys have any. Sounds like maybe not. You could, yeah, I don't know, you wanna go to the next item?
Sure.
I mean, he's got a subdivision.
You just want me to start talking?
That works.
Okay. This is a request for approval of a conceptual sketch plan for a 16 lot cluster subdivision. Steve, you want to let me share the screen and I'll pull up an overhead from GeoGizmo? Thanks. Let me go to the map here, hold on. There we go. So you've got 4100 north, this is off of 3350 north. And we had some prior development applications with this years ago, but they have since lapsed. And so we've got a, a new developer coming in. They would, the total acreage of this is just over 50 acres. The developer's proposing to dedicate about 60%, in fact exactly 60% open space as is required for both the AV3 and the FV3 zone. This kind of, this actually straddles a couple of different zones here. I'll pull that up for you. So you got the, you got the FV3 zone here and the AV3 zone up front. Of course, no bonus density in Ogden Valley, so they're proposing 16 lots. And I'm gonna zoom in a little bit, there's a little bit of roadway actually already cut in from the previous developer. So they're looking to just kind of follow that layout for the most part. Let me pull up just a plat here. I've got it oriented the same way. So you can kind of see what the proposed layout is. Here's 3350 north, this would be their access. And then these would be their two lots. You can see the roadway is stubbed to a couple of property boundaries with a cul-de-sac in here. The bulk of their open space would be here, but they've also got open space that surrounds an ephemeral stream here. And that is what they're proposing. You have any questions or anything? Okay. Open space is a little over 29 acres.
So Tommy, how are they? I'm sorry, how are they doing water and sewer?
They've got, they've actually got, there are actually, if I understand correctly, they've got water and sewer lines already in. Per the previous developer, that's why they're not looking to change the roadway design. So we'll look at feasibility for those, some updated feasibility at subdivision when they submit for preliminary. We'll be looking at water and sewer at that point.
And Tammy, this is just sketch plan endorsement, so no motion or anything needs to be given. They just want to get feeling from the planning commission on your thoughts about this development, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, thanks Rick. Just so you're aware commissioners, the lot sizes vary from .9 acres up to over one and a half acres. Those are the lot sizes.
Quick question, before, when it came, before the planning commission, the original developers, were there any issues back then? Or was there a reason why it didn't go? Or can you give us a little history on that?
I can give you a brief history, I'll probably have more of the history at subdivision. Because we, we got this a little last minute, but my understanding is that the, the owners went bankrupt. And so this has just kind of been sitting, waiting for someone else to take it on.
Now, is it, is the dotted line, is that the stream?
It is, yes.
So it looks like it comes really close on the borderline to a couple of those.
Sorry, are you talking about this dotted line here Commissioner? Or this one here?
Yes, the one you're just pointing to and it crosses the road?
It does, it will actually go under the road.
Okay, and then I, it looks like it's right on the borderline. Are there setbacks for that or what?
That is the setback, I think.
That is, yes.
110 foot setback.
Oh, I see what you're saying, I see, there's a definition. Okay, I, I got it now.
The engineers typically will look at the high watermark and depending on the flow rate, will determine the setback from that high watermark.
Gotcha.
Depicted, this is actually a proposed trail here. This darker dashed line here.
Okay, I see. Great.
Tammy, are the roads private or public?
This would be, when I spoke with the representative for the developer, they indicated there is an agreement actually. Go back to the overhead here. There is an agreement with the. Sorry, seems a little temperamental here. Now, there is an agreement with the neighboring property owner here, the church, that that will be developed and dedicated as well as asphalted in. Actually, I believe it's going to remain a private road, but that may be a better question for the representative tonight. They have proposed 60 feet in width of this roadway coming in. They have an agreement with this property owner here to asphalt all of that, as well as install some automatic gates right up near here, actually a little bit further below. My goodness, I apologize, my laugh was very, very temperamental here.
Hey Tammy, I think they were showing public roads on that concept that we were just looking at.
I think you're right, I think right now, yeah, they're showing it as a public right of way, sorry, I think right now it's just a private access. They're looking at proposing a gate right around here. As well as here, this would be a gated subdivision actually. Thanks Steve.
We know if there's been any history of flooding on that hillside?
That's a good question, that I couldn't tell you at this point. Engineering doesn't typically review sketch plan endorsements and so they haven't, we haven't had any input from them on this. We certainly will at preliminary.
Hey Tammy?
Yes.
Where does, where does that stubbed road go out?
Right here.
Well, I see there's a cul-de-sac on that sketch plan.
Uh huh.
But then to the, then there's a stubbed road that just goes to the property boundary.
Right, the cluster code requires that roadways be stubbed to property boundaries for future connection.
Okay, and where will that be, what adjoining property will that be on?
This is the ski resort over here, we're hoping, I, I think there were some discussions regarding maybe some ski easements, something like that. The developer was hoping to have some, some ski in trails around this way. So that's what the developer was discussing with planning last time.
Okay, and then the other stub goes out onto the property to the east, is that right?
Correct, let me show you an overhead so you can kind of see where that may go.
I think the road is, you can kind of see where, where they're planning to go.
Okay, yeah, thank you, that's helpful.
Yep.
Tammy, is the one that you have the, where's the church property?
The church property is located here. And they own this access strip all the way out to 3350. So the developer has an agreement to pave 60 feet in width over here. All the way up to the access of the camp actually.
Hey, I just realized, Tammy, so scroll up closer to the top where the entrance is, okay, see the house? There's, there's a house on the left and a house on the right?
Yes.
Okay, so Shanna, you were wondering about the history? Shanna, you there?
Yes.
Okay, so the house on the left, I actually built that house. And it's identical to my house, which is funny. So I got to know those owners who owned this like 50 acres or something at the time. And so I've actually walked that land and I looked at it at some point much later. I didn't see any big issues from flooding or anything like that. But just before I finished that house, the owner died. The husband. So they, she sold it off to somebody who started to develop it and then lost it. So it had quite a history, but it started off with one couple buying it and then not, not kind of realizing their whole plan. And then somebody else came in and started it. But. That would belly up also.
Wow, okay, thanks for the history on that.
Yeah. I have walked that though, all that, you're right, all the utilities are in and, and, or like water and sewer lines or whatever. I don't know what they would do with septic, maybe there's no septic in and they just do that on each lot or something. Was there a common septic field concept going or something?
There was, let's see.
How long has it been sitting idle since they put that in?
15 years, 10 years.
Let me see here. Just pulling up the letter for you, mountain water.
I bet you they did that work in like 2010 maybe?
Right, likely, likely we may need something updated, whether it's an updated review from engineering possibly. Just making sure that that still meets current, you know, their, their current plans and current standards, I'm sure.
Is anyone familiar with Nordic Valley and their water situation? Which water that they have? I mean, I'm sure they have to have that have been okayed by. But. Looks like there, it's Nordic mountain water.
Far as I know, they have water. Yeah, I think they're okay.
Again, we typically will look at that at the subdivision lot.
Right.
Excuse me John, this is Chris.
Uh huh.
I apologize, but I do, my internet at home is on the blink, so I, I'm gonna have to just listen in on the phone, so I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay, thanks. And John Howell is not here yet, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I think we're just missing Howell and Waldrop at this point.
John Howell's here.
Oh yeah. Right. Hey John?
Thing to work.
I'm here.
The top corner.
Do you have any other questions on this subdivision?
I don't.
I didn't hear earlier, I couldn't get my thing to work here, but what about water up there?
So Commissioner Howell, there are water lines installed already from a previous attempt at development with this piece of land.
But who supplies the water?
Nordic, and we'll look at the water and sewer when they submit for a subdivision. This is just, this is just in a request for approval of a, of a sketch plan for a cluster subdivision. So we're just kind of looking at the layout and getting a feel from the planning commission and fielding any, I guess preliminary questions, but we do look more in depth at utilities, water and sewer when they submit their subdivision application.
Yeah, other utilities are easier, but water's not, so. Gotta put my thing down here. Working. I'm sort, I'm sort of here.
Do you have any other questions for me Commissioner?
Thanks Tammy.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks Tammy.
One thing I just wanted to update you commissioners on is that typically we have Angela here taking minutes for the meeting. We will still be having minutes taken at these meetings, but we've contracted that out. And in order to kind of streamline things and to help consolidate certain things with funding issues and things like that, so we found a, a source that can do that for us. And so what we'll end up doing is we will be taking, we'll have the meet, the meeting recorded and then we'll give it to the transcriber and they will have them back to us within 30 days. And then you can approve them on your next available meeting agenda. So the only problem that does create a little bit is sometimes you'll ask the person taking minutes to read that motion back to you. And so we won't have that ability with the, the new situation. So I'll try to be taking notes on the motion and things like that, so I can, you know, give you some feedback that way if you do ask those type of things.
Sounds good.
And if we find that this is a problem, we'll just go back to the old way. But I, I thought we'd try this out for a little bit and, and see how it goes. And also Angela's gonna be retiring in July. And so I was trying to kind of prepare for the storm before the storm hits too, so. So.
How long, how long has she been with the county, Rick, do you know?
She's been with the county almost 20, about 22 years, I believe. And she's excited for this new venture in her life, so we wish her the best.
Wow.
I know I'm getting old when everybody's gone, but I used to know.
Also too, just the open meetings training that we have, this is a yearly training that we have. And so when Cortland does this presentation, you may find things that you've heard before, but oftentimes she'll get new stuff as well. And it's to meet the state law requirements for the training that every planning commission needs.
We're very grateful for the lessons Cortland.
Also too, where, we're not gonna be going to the National Planning Conference this year, being able to send a member there just because it's been, well, they haven't canceled, but they have it virtual. But they are having a Utah Chapter Conference in Kanab. And so if any of you are interested in going to that conference, just let me know, you can shoot me a text, an email if you're interested, and then I can look at our budget and see what we have there. Let me give you the dates for that, so. Just look at your calendar and see. It looks like it is May 19th. Through the, so that's Wednesday, Thursday and Friday in May, so. And it's not a rush that you get back to me right now, but you know, within a month or so. They just sent the dates out to me today. They don't even have the agenda put together, so. I'm giving you all my stuff right now, so you don't have to deal with me at the end of the meeting.
You know, Rick, somebody just talked about getting, I just thought it would take longer.
How you doing Rick?
Good, how are you Chris?
Good, thanks.
Good. Well Chair, it looks like it's five o'clock.
Okay. Well, I'd like to welcome everybody to the January 26, 2021 Ogden Valley Planning Commission. Everybody in attendance today is Commissioner Howell, Commissioner Burton, Commissioner Hoag, Commissioner Lackey, and Commissioner Francis and myself, Commissioner Lewis. and Commissioner Francis and myself, Commissioner Lewis, uh, absent so far is Commissioner Waldrop, but we expect him a little bit later. Um, let's go ahead and start off with a pledge of allegiance, since it's all right. All right, pledge allegiance to. To the republic for which it stands, one nation for God. End of this with liberty and justice. Thank you. Okay, um, any ex parte communications or conflicts of interest with the items today? All right, hearing none, um, we'll go ahead and start with the consent agenda. Steve Burton, maybe you could give us the, uh, the rundown, but I guess we're gonna talk about a conditional use permit for the Crimson Ridge wellhouse and tank.
That's correct, Commissioners. This is a conditional use permit um, for a public utility substation um, at the Crimson Ridge Development that is uh, directly uh, west of Pine View. Um, it, it has received a few approvals through the planning commission. It's a, it's a, it's a cluster subject. And for these new, th- these new phases, um, it requires additional water infrastructure, so that's what this is for. Um, we've reviewed the, the site plan as well as the building elevations and they, they are compliant with, with things like setbacks um, as well as uh, the, the aesthetics of the, the, the building. Uh, it will be, it will have, it will be clad in, in, in wood. Um, and it'll look um, really just like any other well, wellhouse that you see, pump house um, that you see for, for culinary water. Um, so that's what this is. Um, it, it generally non, non controversial, so we've, we've placed it on the consent a, agenda. I'll answer any other questions if you have any.
Okay, so not hearing any questions or comments, uh, I'll entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion. Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah. Go ahead, John.
Okay. I, I move to approve CUP two zero two zero, date two zero. Consideration action, conditional use permit, application for Crimson Ridge wellhouse and tank. Mitch Dutrick uh, is the applicant. It doesn't have the address on here, but anyhow, um, uh, this uh, this recommendation uh, is subject to all conditions and all recommendations listed in the staff report into the state and county agencies requirements. This motion is based on the findings listed in the staff report.
Sounds like a good motion. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Ron, thank you. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
I.
I. Motion carries. Um, thank you. Okay, so before we go on, let me back up real quick. Uh, I want to do the approval of the minutes from August fourth, two thousand and twenty. Um, do I have a motion on approving the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the uh, date that was re-recorded. Um, I read the minutes and I have no question.
Okay, thanks, John. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Shanna.
And Shanna, okay, any discussion or questions on the minutes? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
I.
I. All right, motions carries in the minutes of August fourth, two thousand and twenty are approved. Okay, um, petitions and applications, public hearing, so on to an administrative item. Uh, Tammy, why don't you go ahead and take us through discussion action on a conceptual sketch plan endorsement for Harmony Ranch? And then after that, we're gonna skip forward to a nice presentation from Liberty Broadband, so they don't have to stay through our uh, planning sessions, our lessons. So, uh, go ahead, Tammy.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Go ahead.
Um, Chair, would you mind just um, making a note about?
Yeah. Forgot about that. Okay, so another, uh, little, okay, another announcement. I apologize, I didn't say this earlier. Uh, if there's anyone here who's in attendance for the Harvest Moon Conference Center, that has been moved to February twenty-third. All righty.
Thank you.
Sorry for any inconvenience. Thanks, Rick. Sorry, go ahead, Tammy.
You're good, thank you. This is um, this is a request for a sketch plan endorsement for a proposed Harmony Ranch subdivision. Um, this is a parcel that is a little over fifty-three acres. Applicant is proposing to dedicate sixty percent of that as open space as required in our cluster code for the AV three and FE three zones. Uh, let me just show you what they're proposing. Um, I will let you know, there are certain things that we look at more in depth when, um, when we're reviewing the actual subdivision application. So this is more to just kind of show you the proposed layout. Um, and I will let you know that the representative for the owner is on the call tonight. So if you have any questions, I'm sure Mr. Cave will be happy to answer those.
Absolutely.
Okay, to orient you, we, this is located off of thirty-three fifty north. Um, we've got, we've got the Pioneer Bible Camp located here. We've got the LDS Church Camp located here, and this is the subject property. Um, there is a, a stream that runs through the property, and as you can see, uh, as you can see, the bulk of the open space for this uh, parcel is actually located up near thirty-three fifty north here. Uh, but we've also got some open space located around the stream corridor here. Oh, sorry, guys. Let's do this again. Um, we've got some, some more of the open space located here around that stream corridor. This area here, just to kind of clarify, this is the stream quarter and the proposed setback, just so you're aware. Um, there are going to be proposed trails through here. You can see the roadway proposed is to be stubbed to the, um, to the south and east boundary lines here as well as a cul-de-sac. Uh, some of these, some of the infrastructure has already been installed. Are there any questions?
And, and planning commission, let me just emphasize, we're just taking a quick glance at this, uh, letting them know if we see anything major with it. But when it gets down to details, we'll be looking at it again at a preliminary.
Thank you.
Um, you know, we did take a look at it at the pre-meeting and it looked like it was a, a well-thought-through concept. And it's been kind of sitting there, ready to go for a while, so I'm not sure we had any big major concerns. But uh, if there's any commissioner comments, they're certainly welcome.
Uh, Commissioner Howell, um, I already asked about the water at the pre-meeting, so uh, that was answered.
Do you guys have any questions on the layout at all?
I, I think honestly, we just wish you well and uh, we'll be seeing again at the preliminary and, and uh, you know, at that point, I'm sure you'll put even more, you know, thought into it and, and.
Yeah.
The planning, the planning staff's great with working with people and trying to work things through, so.
Absolutely.
Look forward to seeing it at the next iteration.
Sure, let's may I ask one quick question, just really quick, but I didn't notice before. But looking at the layout and then looking at the aerial view, I can see where the stream is by all of the greenery uh, growing, and when you overlay that on the flat, it looks like there is a section of greenery uh, right on top of the small stub to the, about midway on the property. And but you have, but lots will be there. Is that, is there a higher water table there or something? Can you see where I'm talking about?
Yeah, I think Shanna, it's just a big hill. There's no water table there at all.
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty good hill. Uh, we went and walked it.
Wondered why there was all the greenery growing there, all the, um, I can see why along the stream that, that there's a lot of gr- uh, ground covered and trees and shrubs growing, but I wondered why that little loop above this, uh, that cul-de-sac right there, that goes down almost to the road that leads out to that cul-de-sac, which is slated for lots. Do you see what I'm talking, where I'm talking about? Yeah, right there.
Are you wondering what the water situation is like here?
Yeah, I, I just wondering why the trees are right there. I wondered if the water table was quite high to support all the ground cover and with lots going to be going right there, but no big.
I'm sure that when we get into the preliminary design phase, I'm, I'm, we can, we can address that.
Okay.
In walking the site, it, it doesn't seem like it's wet.
Um, okay.
But yeah, we, we'll definitely look at that. I think the intent was with those lots with the trees is that the houses would kind of, the house really that would be on that lot would, I mean, that'd be a fantastic lot.
It would be really, really beautiful.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll, we'll look at that.
Okay, I guess curious, like, you know, not concerned, but I was just curious about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And John Howell?
Yeah, John.
Um, what's the grade there of these lots? How, how steep is the grade there?
I, I believe that the roadway going up is a ten percent, and it's a pretty consistent grade going across there. So I would say guessing that you're probably between a ten to twelve slope on the lots.
Um, now, the open area up above you, they, they will get a lot of snow there, you know, and drainage. You know, a lot of houses over by uh, the ski area or whatever, they, when they put basements in, they flood because of the drainage coming down the hill. So I hope that's looked at.
Yeah, it will be for sure.
Okay, well, thank you. We look forward to seeing you on the next iteration.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your help and your time tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good evening.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Okay, um, I'd like to invite uh, the, we'll go ahead and skip forward to Liberty Broadband presentation.
Uh, Chair, this is Cortland. Um, do we need a motion and formal action on that last item with the sketch plan approval? Um, and maybe this is a question for Tammy and Rick, because um, I, I know the ordinance requires conceptual sketch plan endorsement from the planning commission. I know you've talked about it informally, but it seems like you should probably take some kind of formal action to endorse it or give your approval of the conceptual sketch plan.
Yeah, typically with sketch plans, we have just got the comments from the planning commission. We haven't actually, that was kind of like their endorsement is when they, their comments that they make, we haven't really made a formal motion um, with sketch plan.
Okay, so you just have that on the record and, and that's sufficient?
That's how we've handled it in the past.
The past practice, okay. Thank you. Okay, and uh, welcome Commissioner Waldrop.
Thank you, good to be here. Glad I made it.
Okay, uh, Mr. Christie, I understand you have a presentation uh, for us this evening?
Yeah, John, thanks. Uh, so nice to see some familiar faces and names. Uh, we had asked and uh, we appreciate getting on the agenda tonight, just to really more formally introduce uh, Liberty Broadband and also Freedom Broadband, which are sister companies up here in the valley. And, you know, as a planning commission, we felt, uh, as we've worked with uh, the Weber County Commissioners, uh, Weber County School District, uh, and the town of Huntsville, et cetera, it was good for us to make sure we make our rounds and more formally introduce ourselves. So that's the purpose of tonight, so we won't take too much of your time. But we want to make sure that you're familiar with uh, what we're up to and what we plan on doing for internet infrastructure and providing a much-needed solution uh, that's a little more comprehensive uh, in nature up here in the valley. Uh, so like I said, uh, Liberty uh, and Freedom Broadband Companies, uh, there are two LLCs that, that act as sister companies uh, providing, currently providing wireless uh, internet across the entire valley. Uh, Liberty Broadband, serving Liberty in Eden, and Freedom Broadband Company, uh, serving Huntsville. And uh, we've taken on since two thousand and seventeen, a little bit different business model than you would see uh, in, in other markets where uh, we've had to make a determination early on that it's a unique marketplace that requires unique solutions. Uh, no one technology uh, will be the solution for all people. And uh, there's such a heterogeneous nature of the topography that we're dealing with uh, where we're addressing certain markets where wireless technology works wonderfully. We have great visibility, clear lines of sight, and then there are other markets where that doesn't work. And it becomes challenging and sometimes financially difficult uh, to find solutions for some of these one-off situations, small areas with three or four homes uh, where you have to find access to them. And uh, we're committed to do those types of things, but because we know, living here uh, that uh, we need to find unique different solutions uh, for the residents of the valley. And uh, in, you know, since two thousand and seventeen, uh, the companies, we've, we are now up over uh, seven hundred wireless customers in the valley. And uh, last week, uh, to the town council in Huntsville, we introduced uh, the launch of a fiber project uh, for Huntsville Town, uh, which is notoriously beautiful for their big uh, mature trees. And this is where I live, uh, but it's very difficult uh, to get around them uh, when you're dealing with wireless technology. So a fiber infrastructure here in downtown uh, is going to be the right solution. And the great news for the town of Huntsville is, is this is a project that uh, we didn't need to go seek outside uh, funding uh, to do this or place any onus on the town uh, to help raise money for this, that we're, we've decided to move ahead with this project and uh, and ultimately benefit the, the residents of Huntsville, which is about two hundred and sixty homes. And uh, and having said that, what I'd like to do is introduce Kathy, who is part of uh, the team that founded Liberty Broadband, uh, Michael and Kathy Zindel, who are residents of Liberty. And she was gonna share a quick, just some of the goals uh, that we have uh, as a company moving forward in two thousand and twenty-one. Kathy, are you out there?
Yep, I'm ready to go.
Okay, great, thank you.
Awesome, so um, it's easier, um, most people are visual, so I'm just gonna share my screen, so you can see what our network map looks like today and then point out where our plans are for fiber growth. So that way it's, it's easier to conceptualize that with what you guys do as a planning commission. So let me go ahead and share my screen for you guys. All right, so um, right here, all these little green dots, these are where all of our current towers are. Um, and we have them all the way down here in Huntsville. They go all the way up towards North Fork right now. And, and like Tommy said, you know, there's a lot of need for um, internet here, not only for the houses that aren't currently our customers to have more speed. I mean, a lot of people are moving up here and they're working from home now with COVID and, you know, all of that fun stuff going on. And so our big goal now is to start running fiber, and um, this will allow um, not only businesses as more grow here or, or the ones we have here continuing to grow, um, to have the speeds they need to, to meet those needs. But it also allows, you know, customers to have the speeds they need in order to, you know, work, live and play as they need to. And so our big goal is to continue doing this with liberty and freedom, um, using the free market instead of, you know, going to the county or the state to get funding like uh, most other telecommunications companies do. Um, so. Or the state to get funding like most other telecommunications companies do. So. Our first goal is going to be hitting all the major, you know, neighborhoods that are already so closely grouped together because the more grouped together you get the neighborhoods. The cheaper and easier it is to start running that fiber. So for us, our first big move here in Liberty is going to be over close to Snowcrest Junior High. CenturyLink already has fiber running down the 162, as most people know. And so getting some office space shared to us from any of the existing businesses here will allow us to. Utilize Rocky Mountain Power's poles to just start pulling all the fiber into this neighborhood here, which covers a lot of houses and. Most of them have a hard time getting great internet just because these ones have tons of trees in this whole neighborhood. And then our next big goal here in Liberty is the Preserve, which is up just below the bridges. Let's see on the map. I'm terrible at navigation, so I'm sorry about that. Let's see, the bridge is up over this way. Yeah, so the bridges is up, not the bridges, sorry. The Preserve is up in this area over here where you got Sheep Creek and stuff. And they have this huge hill over here that blocks off a lot of sight for them and then all the trees that block it down on this side for them. So bring in fiber from. Right here on the corner of 4100 North and 3500 East, which is where I live and where our fiber connection comes into. Again, utilizing Rocky Mountain Power, we can pull over here to the Preserve and then our, our next big goal is, you know, hitting. Bailey Acres and all the HOAs up in this direction. For Huntsville, our big goal is town proper to start with, just because it's so densely packed. It's so easy to help get them upgraded and quickly. For Norfolk and Nordic, where it's going to take a little longer for us to grow in that direction. Our goal is to continue using the new. Radio frequencies that are coming out. We're currently beta testing some 60 gigahertz dishes that allow us to do gigabit speeds over them. So we're testing that two houses right now and the snow makes it a little rough. So we're hoping. That the technology will continue to grow because right now sometimes the weather makes it really rough for us. But basically, we're looking to help grow each of the areas to, you know, be able to support. All the new people moving in, all the business opportunities that could happen. And continue to keep ourselves local, you know, hiring local as we can. For our installers and our support teams. And, you know, hopefully take care of our internet problems here that we all have. And I'm open to any questions if you guys have any or any suggestions on other neighborhoods that are worth targeting at the beginning.
Kathy, John Howell, Commissioner John Howell. Your, your communication over there at Nordic Valley, is that up right next to broadband, Rise Broadband?
Yep. So if you know where that Rise Broadband Tower is in Nordic. There's a house right below that and that's actually where our Nordic Tower is. So you can like see the two towers right next to each other. Because it's just a really sightline.
Yeah, Rise Broadband is right at the middle of the large ski area, right at the, the halfway point there. That's where their issue is. So, okay.
You know, just to give you, you know, because a lot of this, especially if you're, if you're not familiar with all the terms and technology. A lot of us have dealt with, I've lived in the valley for 15, 16 years and many of the residents are dealing with. You know, download speeds at their home somewhere in the five megabits range. And as we know, you can't run a modern home with that type of speed. So we're, we're already, you know, selling speed packages up to 100 megabits per second. And with fiber and, and newer technologies through wireless, we're able to deliver much faster speeds. Than that up to gigabyte plans and so forth. In the near future, so it gives you an appreciation for, one, how quickly the technology is changing. But two, how quickly we're, that helps us meet the needs of, of the residents in today's marketplace and all the things we need to be doing from our homes.
Some years back, the company was putting fiber optic all over the valley. And they were burying it. We got it right up our street even, but it's not being used. We asked when it's going to be used and they said, well, the. Feds were paying for it, so they had to put it in or something like that, but it's out there.
Yep, that was actually Quest and CenturyLink bought Quest. And most of these lines were never inventoried. So when I moved here and I saw the fiber markings next to my house at Liberty Park. No one believed me that there was fiber there. We actually had to force them to come out. So for the most part, CenturyLink doesn't know where its fiber is here because no one ever actually inventoried these things properly. So they're finding the fiber as we're looking for new spots to move the fiber to because it's cheaper. For us to make little micro offices instead of running fiber from, you know, my house at Liberty Park down to the Maverick, I can just, you know. Share office space with someone where fiber already exists, you know, they cut out all that, you know, middle price there. So there's a lot of fiber here that no one knows exists and you have to really fight to make CenturyLink come out and find that stuff. So. It's actually really all over the valley and it's just a matter of going and finding those nodes and pulling them up.
Yeah, and, and to add to, to that response to that great question. Is, you know, the fiber, there is fiber around the valley without question. But speaking to the way companies have typically worked in the broadband realm. Is, is they want to look for putting the to-home infrastructure, so actually connecting your home. In areas where they can go in with high density. And if they can't do that, then they don't see it as financially viable. And so, yeah, there's fiber in the valley, but it's laying dormant. Because of the lack of willingness to really take on the task of meeting the needs of these onesie twosie scenarios with very low density. But that's what we've been committed to and we're actually, as a internet service provider, we're actually leveraging, like Kathy just said, we're leveraging. CenturyLink's fiber to bring to you all as customers what we're doing. It's, it's off of, off of them that we are delivering these types of speeds through their infrastructure.
Hey Kathy, this is Commissioner Lackey and I'm a customer and I'm a fan. And I think your guys' success in the future is, is super important to the valley. So this is why I'm asking this kind of tough question. They just upgraded that tower by the storage facilities and now we have 5G coming to our phones and it's extremely fast. How, how do you separate yourself from the big guys like Verizon who would come in and compete? Delivering that kind of broadband?
Fortunately, it's hard to compete with companies like Verizon and AT&amp;T just because they're able to pay a lot more for lobbyists than. The wireless ISPs are. So they actually get a lot more of the five gigahertz spectrum than we do. We own licenses through the FCC for the spectrum we use and no one else can use those. But going forward for the fixed wireless providers such as myself and Rise Broadband. Our space isn't going to be in that five gigahertz spectrum anymore. Most of us are moving into the six gigahertz spectrum, which the FCC just opened up. At the end of last year for routers and stuff to go to. Because the, the big problem with five gigahertz is everyone's on it now. So you have like all those smart cameras, those smart doors, lights, everything is all sitting on those spectrum. So. It gets really clogged up and that's when it gets really slow is because you have tons of, you know, things just advertising themselves on that radio frequency. So for us as a company, our goal is to move into the new technologies. We're not, you know, keeping ourselves hobbled into five gigahertz or 900 megahertz just because. They exist and they work well. Our goal is to move into the six gigahertz spectrum where it's not clogged and we can, we can buy the spectrum before anyone else is buying it. And we're working to the 60 gigahertz and 18 gigahertz. There's so many different frequencies that. Five gigahertz is really what's going to be owned by Verizon and AT&amp;T just because they can afford that. And they have those lobbyists, but for fixed wireless, we're going to be growing into, you know. The spectrums that no one else is using where the technology is increasing for us. So for now, five gigahertz is where we're all stuck, but you know, with the technology coming out this year. We're moving off to six gigahertz and to that fiber speeds instead of keeping ourselves cramped down to 250 megabits.
Okay, thank you. See, Ron, that was the, those are the explanations I couldn't give you. That's why Kathy's on the horn. It's, it's always good to talk to the person that actually knows.
That's right. That's right.
It's, it's really a revolution for fixed wireless as a whole, just because now that there's more radio frequencies opening up, it just makes it so much easier to grow. And with, you know, the government being more, you know, working towards fixing the rural internet problems that, you know, communities like ours and others all over the states have. It, it's making it so more companies are wanting to come out with that technology. So it's a matter of just having a company willing to test that technology and. And deploy the technology now, which is where we are. We like using the new technology. We don't want to be hobbled by the past, so. That's what's kind of separating us from everyone else.
Commissioner Howell again. Do you, is. Reliant still up here in the valley?
I think they're a satellite provider. I know there's HughesNet and ViaSat and they've bought in a few of the other satellite companies. And then Rise has gone through quite a few name changes and purchases, so I'm not sure who purchased that one.
So Reliant actually was. Was before, it, that was the first edition of Digi. That ultimately is now known as Rise Broadband. So. I know that when I moved here 15, 16 years ago, I had Reliant. But they, they morphed into Digi that ultimately is now known as Rise.
Awesome. Well, Kathy and Tommy, thank you very much for the presentation. We're very grateful and appreciate you guys putting in all this infrastructure. It doesn't cost us a thing and the service is wonderful. So thank you for what you do.
To cover was, I know a lot of developers are looking at building up here. And as they start to grow or, you know, present to the, you know, planning commission, if we can, you know, be made aware so that way we can help. You know, make sure we're moving our fiber to the right spots, you know, like with John's new project over in Huntsville, it was easy for us to start at the beginning now, you know. When we can get conduit already laid and fiber before everything happens. So. If possible, is it easy to find a way to provide information to us when new HOAs or. Developments are starting so that way we can, you know, start laying those backbones in place before everything's already built, which makes it harder.
You know, just if you just keep an eye on Frontier, everything that is, happens in the valley starts there. I don't know, Rick, have you changed something about that? But I mean, that's where, if you're going to find out what's being built, it would, it'd be on Frontier, right?
And that's updated as we speak. It's updated every day, so just log into. To date with everything.
Awesome. Yeah, that would make it easier for all of us as well. Thank you for your time, guys.
Thanks, guys. See ya.
Okay. Number four, elections. Should we go talk about that, Rick?
Yeah, typically we start with chair and you do the nomination and then you vote on that and then move on to vice chair.
Okay, let's start with chair.
Taking nominations then?
Yep.
I would nominate John Lewis for another term.
Second. Okay. Appreciate the vote of confidence. Do you have any other suggestions, recommendations? Things that rhyme with Aldrip?
I got a, I got a pretty good load right now, John.
Well, I'm semi-retired, so that's fine.
I'm in, I'm in good shape. I'm, I'm doing just fine with what I think on my plate.
Okay, well, do we vote on that then, Rick? Yes. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, yay. Okay, I'll take nominations for vice chair.
A nomination.
Make a, John Howell, I'll make a nomination of Shanna Francis.
Well, one of you has to be second. Actually, John, you came in second, so you're number two.
But I'm ahead of the horse here. Okay.
Okay, do we have any other recommendations? Oh, Shannon. Having heard none, I'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Motion carries. Shannon, congratulations, vice chair again. You're doing great. I'm trying not to panic you when I leave town.
We don't have any vacations for the next four years.
Well, I might. Okay, there you go, Rick. Vice chair and chair. Let's move on to meeting schedule, approval of 2021 meeting schedule. You just want to vote on it or do you want to present it or something?
John Howell, I'll make a motion that we approve the 21, 2021 meeting schedule.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. The schedule is approved. Approval of 2021 Planning Commission Rules of Order.
Nothing's changed on that. We're just carrying over the, the rules from last year, so. That's more of an FYI.
Okay, all those in favor or I'll, I'll take a motion.
There was one item I wanted to ask about. Where the, where we have consent. Agenda and we have administrative agenda and then we have. Goes through the county commissioners, legislative. Can that be more explained to somebody, some may, not exactly. Where like a consent, you don't have to have public input and, and you can go just right or, right, take a vote on it and, and vote it in. But not so with administrative, it has to be discussed and public input. And then motion and then has to be approved or not approved. And then administrative, you have to. Make a motion to recommend to approval to the county commission and then it goes on. They're the ones that make the final decision on that.
So Courtland may go over some of this in his training, but let me just go over a few items on that right now. When we're dealing with common consent, those are items that typically staffs reviewed and we find that they meet. The requirements of the ordinance. And we haven't heard a lot of public input calling into our office or things like that. And so those are items that we feel can be put on common consent so that you can focus more of your time. On more long-range items or on other items because we know your time is valuable. And so that's why we have common consent. On administrative items, those are items that typically you can approve as the, the commission. And on those items, we do encourage you to take public comment, but you're not required to take public comment on those. Subdivisions, we, we do send out notices on those and those you should take public comment on. When we're dealing with legislative items, those are items that you are just forwarding on a recommendation to the county commission and so you will. Hold the public hearing and then you'll make some type of recommendation and then that's just a recommendation that you forwarded on to the legislative body and in this situation, it's the county. And in this situation, it's the county commission that you would be forwarding that on to.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. That's on the planning commission rules of order twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the planning commission, Leaver County or Ogden Valley Planning Commission rules of order.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, that was Chris? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed?
Nope.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, training, open and public meetings act, Cortland Erickson, you're on.
All right, thank you. Uh, so I do want to share my screen. I know that several of you have already gone through this a couple of times with me. Um, hopefully it won't be too boring for you. Uh, might be new for one or two of you. Uh, let's see. I can make this work here. Okay, can you guys, what do you see there? Do you see the open and public meetings training slide?
Yep.
Alrighty. So um, open and public meetings act is in title fifty-two, chapter four of the Utah code. And there is a requirement, as Rick mentioned, for annual training. It is something that's required by state statute, not just for planning commissions, but for any public body. So that is why we go through this process. I do want to remind you of the purpose of the open and public meetings act, which is basically to make sure actions are taken openly so that members of the public know what is going on and why the decisions are made the way they are. As a result of that policy favoring openness, we need to bear in mind that courts will be strict in their interpretation of any exceptions to the open meetings laws. So, you know, if something gets litigated, we're not necessarily going to be able to have an easy time convincing a court that it was proper to uh, err on the side of closed actions instead of open actions. So you've seen these questions in prior trainings, most of you. Uh, but I do want to touch on some of these because these are some of the more important recurring points that you deal with on the planning commission. Uh, for instance, if something comes to mind, um, maybe a potential ordinance change or something that you forgot to put on the agenda, can you hold a discussion about that during the meeting as long as you hold off on any action until the next meeting? Well, the answer is no, because anything that's going to be discussed at the meeting needs to be listed under an agenda item on the meeting agenda. So what if someone from the public comes to a meeting and asks you to do something, maybe change his zoning ordinance or something like that? Can you go ahead and discuss it at that time? Yes, there actually is a difference there because if a member of the public comes to you, um, you are able to discuss it during that open meeting. However, the catch there is that you may not take final action on it unless it was listed as an agenda item. So you would need to go ahead and list it on the next meeting's agenda, for instance. What about this possibility of just a topic that says other? That way you can talk about whatever else you may have forgotten to include on the agenda. Well, no, that doesn't work because we need to provide reasonable specificity to notify the public as to the topics to be considered at the meeting. Now, maybe there is something kind of sensitive that you want to discuss as a planning commission without knowing, without having the public know what you're saying. Can you close the meeting to have a discussion? It depends on the purpose for closing the meeting. There are very specific situations under state law when a meeting can be legitimately closed. For instance, strategy sessions to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation. Um, there are various other things, most of them would not apply to the planning commission. One that could is sometimes um, deliberation on a quasi judicial decision may be a basis for a closed meeting or closing a portion of a meeting. Um, that is kind of limited in the circumstances that would come up. Um, typically not what you're going to be dealing with, but if anything ever comes up, just ask the assigned attorney and we can let you know if it's okay. How about emails? Is it okay to email back and forth among the whole group or a couple of you? Yes, it is. Um, emails are not restricted in any way by the open and public meetings act. Um, keep in mind those emails may be disclosed or subject to, is subject to disclosure under the grandma laws, so they may still be public, uh, but you're free to email back and forth. Now, when you're outside a planning commission meeting, you're together, say, a few of you, can you go ahead and talk about agenda items? Um, either right before or right after the meeting or any other time? Well, if it's less than a quorum, in other words, if it's one, two or three of you, uh, yeah, that's okay because it's not a quorum. But if a quorum is participating, then it probably violates the law. Um, so if four, five, six or seven of you are together and you're talking about an application or a legislative decision that's coming up, it's safest if that happens not to discuss those issues because that would be considered a situation where it would probably count as a meeting and you would probably need to do that in an open and public meeting with an agenda. So finally, our favorite question, I can't get in trouble for violating the open and public meetings act, right? Well, as we've talked about before, uh, courts may overturn actions. Um, they may disclose the information that was in the closed meeting and it is a class B misdemeanor to knowingly or intentionally violate closed meeting provisions. So any questions on that review, what we've gone over so far?
The only thing I could say is, Cortland, stay close.
Okay, I will plan on it. Um, in terms of new stuff, um, I did want to talk a little bit about electronic meetings because obviously that's been something we've done much more of this past ten months or so. Electronic meetings themselves under the open and public meetings act are not new. Um, section fifty-two dash four dash two oh seven has been in place for some time now. And just to touch on a couple of highlights, we do need to have each public body, if it wants to have electronic meetings, needs to have either a rule, an ordinance or a resolution allowing electronic meetings. We do have that in our rules of order. As I looked at that in preparation for this, there may be a couple of things on there we want to modify. So Rick, I don't know when and how you want to go about that. Uh, if you want to get with me sometime, we can talk about that. Uh, but it is perfectly legal since we have that in our rules for us as a planning commission to be doing these electronic meetings. Now, the rules, um, they can establish limits and requirements that the public body itself decides are appropriate for electronic meetings. For instance, you might decide you have to give a certain type of notice to hold an electronic meeting that might be a little different from an in-person meeting. Or you might decide that you can only hold them in certain circumstances. And um, that, that's really up to the public body. Uh, there are some notice requirements established by statute. And one of the important statute, statutory requirements is that typically an anchor location is required, which is a place where the public can attend and monitor the proceedings of the public body. And if it's going to be a public hearing, the members of the public need to be able to participate and provide their comments from the anchor location. This past year, in the fifth special session of twenty twenty, there was a new change to that statute that does allow an electronic meeting without an anchor location if the chair of the public body makes a written determination that conducting the meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. And if the chair states in writing the facts that that determination is based on, and there are some other requirements about um, basically notice of how the meeting is going to be conducted um, and what's going to be provided to allow for comments and participation. Uh, that determination expires after thirty days. Uh, presumably the chair could go ahead and make a subsequent determination, basically saying the same thing, but it looks like it's designed not to allow it to be perpetual. It would need to be renewed with reasons underlying that determination. So that is really the only change that I noticed in the open and public meetings act over the past year. Uh, otherwise it's the things you're already familiar with. So do you have any uh, any questions other, if you don't, then I'm done.
I just have a quick question regarding chair duties or their just the chair, I, I'm embarrassed that I haven't noticed or paid attention. Just can the chair make motions? Uh, in, in planning commission meetings or do they just conduct?
That, that's a good question. It's not answered in the open and public meetings act. That would be something that would be determined by
I'm sorry, I should have waited if anybody had questions on that before I asked.
That is a good question and um, in
I think our rules of order
Yeah, I was gonna say in the rules of order, under making of motions, it does say any planning commissioner except for the chair may make a motion. However, any planning commissioner may second a motion. So the, the self-imposed rules that the planning commissions have adopted at this time currently do say anyone except the chair can make the motion, but anybody including the chair can second it.
Okay. There we go.
That's on page eight.
I got it now. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, well, that sounds like not seeing any other questions.
I have one more. Did you do any of the artwork?
No, uh, I think that was by Brian Barron, one of the other attorneys in my office.
Thanks, Cortland.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We can't hear you, John. You're on mute.
Unmute. Okay, thank you, Cortland. Um, okay, well, that concludes our training. I'll go ahead and open it up to the public if there's any public comment for anything that's not on the agenda.
They're rushing the podium here.
Uh, this is Ron Gleason.
Hey, Ron.
Good evening. First of all, commissioners, thank you for all your work that you're doing on the planning commission. I wanted to just make it uh, one statement, but also bring to your attention, if you're not aware of it, uh, state bill HB one ninety-eight, which would introduce a Utah dark sky license plate. Uh, make it a fourth available options for a, a license plate. And since North Fork Park is the twenty-first designated IDA dark space park, I think would be a great option. It would be great for those of us who support both the lighting ordinance and North Fork Park to have the ability to get these license plates. And if you can contact your state representative, either by phone or possibly email or lean over it and, and talk to him, uh, for support of that, I think would be great. And I hope it passes. I see right now it's been introduced and I haven't seen any other movement on it at, at this point. But I wanted to make everybody aware that there is such a bill in place. And if you support dark skies, I hope, again, you, you contact your representative and we can make this happen. Thanks.
I'll keep an eye on it, chair, and let you guys know, but Steve Handy's running it. Hasn't been assigned to a committee yet, so I can check up on that and uh, nice, great.
That'd be great.
Thanks, Ron, for bringing that up.
And Ron, thanks for all your support of the dark skies. Appreciate all your work and effort.
Yep.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, um, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Uh, any remarks from planning commissioners? Nothing? Okay, how about uh, planning director?
Just along those dark sky um, lines. We are doing enforcement um, up in the valley when we see things happening. Um, we're working right now on a development that is going in that um, that they showed on their plan that they were dark sky compliant, but they put in fixtures that were not. And um, and so we're working on um, that. So just FYI.
Yeah, appreciate that. Um, okay, anything additional from uh, Cortland, legal?
Nope, I think I've said enough tonight. Thanks.
Okay, well, thank you all for your time tonight. Appreciate it. Uh, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night.
Have a great night.
Good night, good night, good night.
Good night, John Boy.
Hey, Rick, are you there?